Good morning. It's 8:30. Welcome to the August 23 meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
President.
Commissioner Harris. Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
Isha Waymire.
President.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation led by Pastor Leonard Chesbrough.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father God, we're thankful we can be here today. We thank you for every day you give us. Bless each one. I'll be taking my reading out of Romans 11:1. Israel rejects the gospel. Oh, now explains that God's rejection of Israel is only partial and temporary. Israel will eventually accept God's salvation, accept God's salvation in Christ. See, the Israelites, they would serve God for a while and then they'd go back and serve a golden calf and this, and so that's the way. And then if they needed something, they'd call upon God. And so Heavenly Father God, we thank you that we can come to you with our requests, Lord. We thank you, God. You answer our prayers. We just praise you and give you all the glory. In Jesus's name. Amen. God bless everybody.
Any correspondence or organizational business today?
No ma'am.
Any public comments today?
Nope.
All right. The consent agenda today consists of the minutes from the budget meeting on August 9th and the minutes from our meeting on August 16th.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. And our first item of business is approve the fiscal year 2024 Adult Carryover Reimbursement Plan, Dustin Browning, Community Correction Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first thing this morning is the approval of our budget and plan for our fiscal year 24 Adult Carryover Funds. These are funds that we get to carry over from year to year because we collect them from various sources, most notably our clients, and when we assess supervision fees. The total for fiscal year 24 right now is $81,317.06. You have the budget breakdowns in front of you. I'd be happy to go into it line by line if you wanted to, but these are pretty much standard from what we have done year to year. We do set aside a little bit of funds, $10,000, just in case we have to do any payouts if somebody leaves our agency that has a lot of sick leave, vacation leave to pay out. We did spend about $25,000 in this adult fund last year in fiscal year 23. And so one of the things is that we have to do a budget for this every year. We can't just have it in reserve and just have a fund. So we have to make sure we have some sort of budget for it. So that's why we bring this before you every year. This was approved by the Advisory Board at their last meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have on this.
Any questions? All right, we do have to make a motion, and that would, motion would be, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 Adult Carryover Reimbursement Plan.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes.
And the second one is the Juvenile Carryover Funds for fiscal year 24. Same kind of thing here, except the dollar amount is vastly different. This total is $6,131.34 right now for fiscal year 24. The breakdowns are similar to what we have done in years past, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have on that one.
Any questions? If there were an affirmative motion would be, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 Juvenile Carryover Reimbursement Plan.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Dustin, your department is one of those that we don't put, do a lot of hands on.
No.
But we also don't hear a lot of bad things about, so we appreciate your leadership.
I like to keep it that way.
Yeah.
You know, no news is good news, I think, in my department.
Absolutely. All right, we're gonna move on to staff reports.
Yeah, thanks, Ayan. Before we get to staff reports, I want to have a discussion that is not going to be a surprise to any of you. Want to talk about my compensation. We have talked about my compensation. As you know, I fulfill two roles with the county. I'm the county administrator and I'm the county counselor. While you pay me a generous salary, I have fallen increasingly behind other folks and other organizations. I think it's important that Franklin County realizes a financial benefit because I am one person filling two roles. But it's getting to the point where I need that skewed a little bit in my direction because there are a lot of organizations that pay over $100,000 more than you guys do for these services. And with all due respect to those organizations, I think I could argue incredibly convincingly that we're in a much better spot. One of the things that I don't have that is very common among executives is a deferred comp plan. It's very common for counties, cities to contribute into that on behalf of their administrator or manager. 6% annually, so 6% of my annual salary appears to be fairly common. I would like to ask for that. And then a one-time adjustment in salary. This is not in lieu of COLA. It's not in lieu of merit. It's just a flat adjustment of 10 grand. Feel like that still keeps things heavily skewed in the county's favor. But what it does for me is, it tells me that you see it. It's a vote of confidence, and that is as important to me as anything. Certainly would appreciate your consideration of this. Happy to talk about anything you feel is necessary. Really happy with where the organization is at, and certainly hope you all are too. And that certainly, that's a testament to the team we've built, a testament to all of you. It's a testament to all of us. So happy to take any questions.
I think we've all reviewed and seen also what other county administrators, city administrators are making. And it's been years since we've renegotiated. You came in new and you're seasoned and good at what you do. And that kind of to the next thing, you know, we know what you're making, we know what others are making, and we want to keep you right in line. But more importantly, your work product has been great. We don't have the issues that a lot of other organizations have with their administrator. And boy, once you've had a bad, poor administrator, you understand the value in that. And then, of course, you do have a lot of green service, our counselor and our administrator and almost every other, except for, I think, one. I can think of one other organization that's that way. So normally, they're paying two very high salaries. We definitely realize the savings there. And like you said, that's probably about $100,000 for the county, so.
Yeah, I know it's difficult for you to talk about such things.
Right.
Difficult for anybody to say what you said. But over the years, I've been here, tremendously improved our county and moved it forward. And I think you're well worth everything we can give you, probably a lot more. So I just appreciate what you've done for the county so far.
When I first came, I really questioned whether one person could do two jobs. And I don't know how you do it, but you do a hell of a job.
I agree with everything, so thanks for all the good work. We'll keep moving forward.
I was here when we hired the very first administrator, and we made a lot of gains and a lot of bumps and bruises over the years. They told us when we started that we'd probably go through three before we found one. And I thought that sounded strange, but it was, there's a lot of truth to it, you know. And we went through those bumps and bruises, and now, now we're established, and now things are running at a very mild. I mean, we don't appreciate how smooth it's running because it's just, it's just the day-to-day life right now, you know. So we don't, you know, you forget after time, you know, the rough times, how much smoother it is now, so.
What year did you become the administrator also?
I believe it was 16. I started in September of 14, and I want to say it was November of 16.
So just to be clear, the, we talked about, we're talking about a 6% and starting...
24.
Just so, just so that that's on the record. So starting January of '24, and then the pay bump, and starting as of August?
August 1.
August 1. Okay, all right. So that's on record. So we need a motion?
A motion to that effect, and also just to authorize you to execute a written addendum that spells this out.
You need a motion for the chair to authorize a written addendum to your employment contract to add a 6% deferred comp.
And the rate adjustment.
'24, and then rate adjustment also in '24?
Effective August 1.
August 1, this year.
Okay, yeah, for payroll reasons at least.
Yeah.
Make a motion to that extent?
Thank you.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes.
Sincerely appreciate the vote of confidence. Really like this job. Really appreciate working for all of you. You know, one of the things that I think about a lot is how much we've done. I mean, no one knew the pandemic was coming, and that was, that was an incredible challenge. But you look at the radio system, the decision on the JDC, the software upgrade, the Wellsville EMS station. These are generational projects, and I'm proud that we've been able to do that. But one of the things that I want to do better, it's my communication with all of you. It's, I get so caught up in operations and running the day-to-day and working on these projects that I also want to make sure that this is a rewarding experience for the five of you. And so, and you all kind of require different things. You have different aspirations. And I just, I want you to know that that is very much among my goals moving forward, is just to make sure that you all are fulfilled and seeing your goals as a county commissioner. We want to try to make them come to fruition too. So I really appreciate it, and for today, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Paul Bean.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Just a quick update. We did get our housing study yesterday. And so, over 100 pages, so I'm still digging through that. But I have sent the full report to the city and the county and some, some folks, developers and that type of thing. And then there's a recommendation that's much briefer, about two pages. But there's no big surprises in it, but it's good to have this, like you said, we have to have this renewed every two years so we can seek those MIH grants and other funding sources. It includes Wellsville, and Wellsville has a copy of that. Pat's confirmed that, Dawn. So it's a tool that they can use as well. It, it really, as we know, it goes off of census data, which is out of date. But then the narrative speaks a lot about what's going on and how the census data really doesn't reflect this particular county. With all the growth in, up north with Edgerton and Panasonic, and then the growth down in Burlington. And really just what we're seeing is new housing. Obviously, we've got a lot of new housing going up in Wellsville with 140 rental units going in off the new Sixth Street expansion. Another development there is being worked on for a couple hundred single-family residents over a period of time. That's the kind of growth and opportunities we need. Ottawa has done a really good job with their Neighborhood Revitalization Program, and it stipulates in here, indicates in here, suggests that maybe Wellsville look at trying something like that for their infill. And I think on the flip side, Ottawa probably needs to look at some larger development tracks, kind of like Wellsville's doing. And so, kind of walks through that. But we need, as we know, we need rental, we need single-family, we need senior housing. So the data still supports that. But happy to share all 147 pages if you'd like to see the whole thing. But want you to know that we do have that available. If you know of anybody that's interested in looking at that from a development standpoint, I'd be more than happy to share it with them and visit with them. So just wanted to let you know, we finally got the housing study. On the certification of Proximity Park, we're running into a couple of hiccups. We're working through. One is the requirement in the certification program is an updated wetlands report. The thing with that is there's legislation that's been passed, and they're waiting for some authorization to execute, I guess. But could basically make that a mute point. So for us to, and they want us to update what we have, for us to update that knowing it might even be irrelevant in 60 days. We're having some discussions on how we can work through that with, with the certification process. The other piece that came up yesterday is they require a completed full title policy. Well, title policies are priced upon the value of what you're getting title on. Well, we have an eight million-plus park. So we will start negotiating on how we might work our way around that and see what we can do. Doesn't mean we would, we wouldn't spend a million. Don't, I don't want to be misquoted. But you can tell, you know, if you have a title policy on your home, it's several hundred dollars. So you can imagine what a title policy might cost for Proximity Park. So just kind of negotiating through that, want to give you an update. I still think we'll get it certified. Just like any process, sometimes you run into bumps. Got everything else done. Marlin West has done a fantastic job, so we're just working through those two issues. And hopefully, pretty soon, we'll get those resolved, and I'll be able to say that the park's certified. So happy to answer. Any questions?
Paul, I, talking about certification and certainly want to... We're partners with the city on the project, obviously, and I know you've reached out to both the city manager and I. I do think we should have a discussion, and I think it starts exactly there, about how we want to value that. Because a title policy on an $8 million park, I'm not sure that's something that the county and the city can reasonably expect FCDC to cover that cost. But I think a discussion needs to be had. Is that truly what we value it at? And what is value? Is value what somebody's going to pay for it? And in this climate, is somebody going to pay $25,000 an acre?
Right.
And I do think we need to have that discussion.
And I appreciate that. And the other thing is, you may recall, I got a grant from the state to kind of help cover some of these costs. I didn't ask for the max, and so if, once we get a price point on that, I'll probably turn back around and ask for more and see what we get there. So I'm not giving up on more grant money as well. So, but first, we just need to figure out what do we want to value it, and then the title company will review it and give us a price point. And then we'll kind of go from there and figure out what are, if we want to do on that, so.
And I'll forewarn you like that, and I think you know this, but that's always a discussion. I mean, they're gonna set the value, so happy to start it, you know. But then at some point, I'll need the opinion of these five.
Yeah, I think, I think you and me and the city manager will have to have a discussion and then take it to each commission, and so we'll work through it. I guess the last thing is, and I'm probably still in your thunder, but I want to encourage everybody to go on the car show in Wellsville on the 29th. It's exciting to me that what they're doing now with their proceeds is supporting the trades. So they're providing scholarships for people entering the trades, where if somebody say they need some steel, they're in the trades, but they need some steel-toed boots, they can go to this group and ask for assistance. So I'm real excited. Talked about that at the chamber meeting, I think it was, Dawn. And so I reached out to the chair of that and told him, once he got through this, because I know he was really busy getting ready for this car show. Actually, it's 25th. I said 29th, didn't I? It's this week. That I want to sit down with him and see how FCDC and, and we can partner. And I mentioned at the board meeting, Derek said, well, you know, it's tourism and jobs, so there might be a role that the county can play as well. So I'm looking forward to having those conversations and seeing how we can support that car show. But it brings about 4,000 people to Wellsville, so that's, that's pretty phenomenal. So very charged by their leadership and what they're trying to do, and FCDC's a small sponsor this year. But I'm real excited about what they're trying to do for the trade, so we'll, we'll certainly reach out and see what we can do to come up beside them.
And if you would loop me into that discussion, I would appreciate it. And then certainly, if Dawn feels it's appropriate, would like to invite him to sit down as well.
Any questions for me?
And imagine any place in Franklin County would be a wetland right now, but yeah. Awesome. Right. Thank you for your work moving forward.
Thanks. Thank you.
Dustin, do you have anything more for us today? All right. Pat Toad. I brought a sidekick today.
I brought another one. So as you know, we just recently hired a building official, and now we have a sanitarian. So this is Brian Falk. He decided to join us on the hottest week, I believe I can remember. And so we've been out doing inspections already. The first day, I think that was the first thing he did when we showed up. And we went right outside and sweated off for a little bit. So hopefully, the weather improves for him and we can keep on going. But yeah, he has a ton of experience in the field. He has a real heavy background in sanitation, so we really got a good hire on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So if you want to introduce yourself.
I'm Brian. I was former owner of DNS Sanitation. I'm sure you saw the truck running around the county quite a bit, so did the...
Yeah, that was my question. Who am I going to call now when I need my traffic tank pump?
Got a young man to buy me out, and hopefully we push on down the road with him.
Well, we were excited to hear that you were considering our position, so welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Chair, if you got anything for us?
Good morning. Derek, I'm a little surprised you didn't point out that they went through three county administrators before they hired a Central Heights grad, and that was part of...
Oh, yeah.
I thought I'd pick it up for you. You bet, you bet. I just wanted to say thank you to the Commissioners and Derek, and those that came, and the department heads that came out to the retirement ceremony that we had last Friday. I know a couple of you couldn't be there, and we passed those words along on your behalf. But appreciated the support that the county showed to our staff and the kind words that were expressed there as well. And I just want to say, last week, I had the honor of doing a presentation with the new Highway Patrol Superintendent Eric Smith and Senator Roger Marshall. We presented to the Homeland Security Center to Combat Human Trafficking at their, at their conference training. We did a presentation on human trafficking and highlighted some of the things that are going on here in Franklin County and the work that we did with the human smuggling legislation that was done here in Kansas. So if you may end up seeing something about that, because I'm sure the senator's gonna end up saying something about it. But I wanted you guys to hear it from me and say that, again, it's good that people are noticing the work that we are doing here in Franklin County and the progress that we're helping the state to make in a lot of things. So I appreciate the opportunity that I had to represent us and to take care of that. That's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
It was a nice ceremony you had for Curtis.
Yeah, thank you.
I've, I think some of it is the culture of law enforcement, but I think you're especially good at it. I've always admired, whether it's a retirement, a funeral, you guys are awesome at showing support for, for your coworkers who've lost someone. It's just, it's, I don't know. You do a good job with that, and I hope that meant a lot to Curtis. I think it did.
Think so.
He had a great turnout there. That room was packed, so testament to his career here.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Hey Jeff, a person has heat-related problems, and they call the Sheriff Department. Do you have a place that you can send them?
If they have heat-related problems, then...
At their house or something like that?
We've been, Tom Winter has sent out some information on that, and he helps coordinate with that. EMS is going to be their primary place to make sure that they're not having any type of heat stroke or any, any of those type of symptoms. We do carry water in our vehicles, and we have responded to some, to some of those. But the emergency management is where I would really direct them to if they're having problems with housing and things like that. They can help coordinate with some, United Way may have some cooling centers and things like that. I know we've got a couple of churches that have been opening up as well, so, yeah.
And we do have Tom in light of the temperature. I have him going on COFO in the morning. He sent out a great email to his listserv, a PSA about tips and what to do, and I'm going to have him hop on COFO and say the same thing. Just trying to push that word out as far as we can to help folks out, so.
Good.
Stay inside, stay cool, stay safe. Yep. Awesome. All right. Dustin, anything for you?
As Derek mentioned, the software projects are one of the things he's proud of. I'll give you a quick update on that because we do have some very big weeks coming up for that project. On Monday, we'll begin the parallel payroll process, which is basically validating the new software's payroll process with this current month's payroll data to make sure everything's calculating right, and that's going to be ready to go. Next weekend or starting noon on the first, we're going to do our final data pull for all the financial management and get that sent over so that that can be loaded in starting on the fifth, and we begin our go-lives for the financial management projects or parts of that project, starting on that Monday for another four weeks. So we do all of the core financials that first week, and then we start building on top of that. In the third week, we get payroll and employee self-service and all those pieces going, and then wrap up with the contracts management and those final pieces that are new to us. But all the go-lives for the financial management piece will be going throughout the month of September, and we will have one more, one more piece of this off the to-do list and down to just a couple left. But this one is a big one for us, not to minimize the impact that David's product has had for him or Vicky's product has had for hers, but this is one that really is going to impact all the departments and how we do a lot of the business that we do. So very tough five weeks coming up, but very important as well.
Good job. Awesome. Thank you. David Lee.
All right, to stay on the heat-related topic, all of the public work staff, well, most of them are starting their days an hour earlier so that they get off a little bit earlier in the afternoon. We're really paying attention to our personnel. We've had a few issues, minor issues, with some of our equipment overheating due to the circumstances. But fortunately, at least so far, we haven't had any issues with personnel, so we were watching that closely. Vance Brothers got started with our chip seal project last Friday. They had a bit of an issue getting started Friday morning. If they had notified us that they were going to be there Friday, we could have helped with that. But things are moving along just fine now. The, the type of chip that we're using this year, the limestone chip, it is, it's much dustier than, than folks have been accustomed to for the last, I don't know, probably close to 10 years. But I think it'll be just fine once, once traffic gets on it and wears it down a little bit. So we're, we're working on that. They should be done by Tuesday, Wednesday of next week at the latest, provided they don't have any weather-related issues. And then finally, here a month or two ago, the Kansas Department of Labor came through our shop and really, I think, all the facilities. and, and really all, I think all the facilities. And they noted that our forklifts, we've got a couple of forklifts that we use. We didn't have certifications for our operators. Didn't realize that was a thing. So Pat Campbell took the initiative and worked with Amy and K Works to, to schedule the training. So yesterday, we had approximately thirty-three public works and, which included road and bridge, noxious weed and recycling, along with our maintenance staff, all went through training. So now we have about thirty-three certified forklift operators, which was a great way to, we had two different classes, got a big percentage of our folks kind of out of the heat for a couple hours. So that was good. And piggybacking on that, we've got a, I'm looking at a couple of other training opportunities in the coming months. One's a blade operator training and then another one that's a general public work. So we'll be trying to continue building up our staff. That's all I have.
The heat, doesn't bother the chip and seal?
No, it, 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 it makes things a little, the, the.
The bush is a little more viscous.
Yeah, it, and so it, it's probably takes a little bit longer, leaving the chips on a little bit longer. Usually they sweep it after a couple of days. So we're going to let that sit for a little bit longer. Due to that, but I think at the end, we'll probably end up with a, probably a better product than, than if the temperatures were cooler. It really allows those chips to sit in the emulsion and be a good service for us.
Yeah. Nothing for you? Alright, we'll start with Commissioner comments.
The only big thing, I'll follow up on Paul and the chamber up there that called it show was sponsored for several years. Last year, the gentleman and the group that's been doing it broke away and, and it's not a bad thing. You want, on a deal like that, you want people that are, the tractor show, you want tractor people to run it. You car show, you want car show people to run it. I mean, they know, they know what people want and what the, you know, entrance and the people show up want. But they're still working close with the chamber and the chamber even put a little money into it to, instead of the other way around. And they have got their nonprofit and I've helped them, worked with them on several angles on what to do. And, and, and the big thing is with those types of things, it's getting sponsored. And that's what they really pushed this year. And you mentioned the donors for scholarships, cable donors come in. And part of their sponsorship is they're paying for some of the, some of the scholarships and the car club shows night. So, you know, that's what it takes is getting in there. They're going to run into the same problem, not as much as here, but the town's only so big. You know, and right now, they're, you know, and you, you still got a traffic flow and, and everything. So that's only their biggest thing right now is it's growing so much to keep it under control and still let the city function, you know, as normal, you know? Like here, it's down in the park except for Saturday night. So it's another, whole nother issue. But, but I think they're doing, they're doing a good job, the organization that's doing it. I think it's a great thing for Wellsville and the county and because it brings a lot of people in from outside and adds a lot of business for the businesses up there. And just, it's a pure entertainment. It's just like the car show is here. There's no cost to people come and enjoy an evening. So they do charge the potential, but you gotta, you have to pay for the thing. They don't come free. So that's all I got.
Yeah, I went to the, Saturday morning, I went to the old Deport Museum. They got their Smithsonian exhibit all set up and ready to go. And Janet had the honor to give a little talk about voting and did the ribbon cutting to open up the show. This is quite an exhibit. On the, on the main floor is kind of national voting issues over, over the years. And on the second floor is Franklin County issues over the years. So pretty nice exhibit. It's, I think it's the only one, I think it's the only place we're going to be in Kansas is at the old Deport Museum. So have time, go, go visit the Smithsonian exhibit at the old Deport Museum.
Do you know how long it's going to be here? Weeks.
I don't.
How many? Six weeks? Awesome. Alright, cool. Nothing for you? Alright. On Friday morning, I went to the Prairie Paws Chamber Coffee. They have done a lot of work there. I think at one point, they decided instead of asking for more money, they needed to find out how to save money. And one of the things that, when they built that building and whose idea this was, they decided to have indoor/outdoor dog kennels where dogs can just go in and out all the time. Well, when you have sixty holes in your wall, that makes your air conditioning bill go crazy. And so one of the things they did was to cover all those up. Makes a huge difference. And things like that to make things better out there. I think they have a good leadership team now. I did, due to the retirement reception for Curtis Hall, you hate to lose a good employee like that, but then you're thankful that we were the ones that got to keep him for twenty-five years. So appreciate, we really appreciate your employees. And then the city of Ottawa, just FYI, Dennis Tharp, longtime utility director, is retiring. I think he probably wished he would have retired a couple of months ago. Then he wouldn't have had to deal with the last storm. But well deserved retirement. And then the last thing, there is, at, in this room tonight at six o'clock, there is an opioid awareness program. If you think that there is not a drug problem in Franklin County, then you probably need to come. And because definitely there is. But it is, it is open to the public. They do serve supper. So, and it's cool in here. Otherwise, stay cool. There's no other business to come before the commission?
I got one thing. I was, I was thinking about this morning and said something to Pam. I've actually seen three utility directors retire since I've been around Lewis. So Jack Davis was the first one, Jim Bradley and Al Tharp.
And he's been there, yeah. Wow.
So moved.
Alright.
Thank you.